Revised minutes of November 5, 2007. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. The minute's approved. Thank you very much. Our first item on the policy calendar. Mr. James McCarthy, Senior Vice President and Provost, will introduce Item 1, A Resolution, a naming resolution at Baruch College.
I'm pleased to introduce the resolution to name the Bert Wasserman Department of Economics and Finance at Baruch College. Bert Wasserman was a distinguished graduate of Baruch, and he and his wife Sandy have been longtime supporters of Baruch. Their recent gift to name the Department of Economics comes on top of, in addition to, an earlier gift that named the Wasserman Trading Floor, which is part of the Zicklin School of Business at Baruch. And this, Bert was a graduate of the Finance Department at Baruch and went on to have a very distinguished and successful career in the field of finance, and this is a most suitable way of honoring Bert's contributions to Baruch over the years. Honored to present it.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, he was the one that orchestrated the deal between Time Inc., Warner Communications.
What?
He's the one that did the whole financing. So he's a very...
Thank you. Our next, Nancy Hager, will you come to the table, please?
Brooklyn College is asking for the approval of seven namings, two centers, two facilities, and three professorships. All of these are existing. Thank you. All of these are existing situations. In six instances, the donors are alumni of Brooklyn College, and in one instance, the wife of a deceased department chair. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. If there aren't any, could I have a motion on Items 2 through 8?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael Rogavin, you'll come to present the items for City College, please.
Thank you very much. We're presenting Items 9 through 21. These are all existing spaces that had been named unofficially, and we'd like to have them named in accordance with the policy of the Board of Trustees. These are named for faculty members who had passed away, as well as some distinguished alumni. Happy to answer any questions on these items.
Okay. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President Gail Mello? There you go. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. I'm here to ask your approval to name a nursing lab for H.I.P.C.L.S., which stands for Centralized Lab Services. It's a lab service in Long Island City that has donated money to totally revamp the nursing lab.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. President Bill Kelly?
Happy New Year. I'm here to seek your approval for the establishment of the Leon Levy Center for Biography. This is a center that seeks to promote the intersection of scholars and their work, and a larger public who care about the life of the mind. This is a center that will foster the production of biographies, both from people within the university and from outside it. CUNY has great strength in this area. One would think of David Nassau and John Diggins, Rachel Brownstein, Joan Richardson, many more. We approached the Leon Levy Foundation for their support. They responded with a $4 million gift to launch the center, and we're very delighted to have the center in place and to announce the appointment of Nancy Milford, the biographer of Zelda Fitzgerald, and Edna St. Vincent-Malay, who will help us head up the center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. President Meiskins?
This is an amendment to the governance plan of Queens College.
Thank you. I'm here to ask for approval of a governance change. We have a Senate that's composed of students and faculty, two-thirds faculty, one-third students. We want to continue with that same proportionality, but we've worked carefully through our bylaws to make sure it's a more efficient, smoothly operating Senate. We have a Senate Chair at the moment who's doing an extremely good job, and so we think this will help us to act more in a parliamentary way than we have in the past. So that's why we ask your approval of this.
Thank you. Comments, questions? If there being none, may I have a resolution for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Resolution regarding proposed revisions to the PSC CUNY Welfare Fund Trust Indenture.
I will present that item.
And first of all, we have to make sure that our change here is our Vice Chancellor for Human Resource Management will now present. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1B25 is a resolution regarding revisions to the PSC CUNY Welfare Fund Trust Indenture. The revision reflects a review conducted by the Board of the Welfare Fund, the PSC, and CUNY. The new document updates the fund's governing documents, makes them consistent with governing documents of similar funds, and reflects existing practices. I submit Item 1B25 for approval.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 26.
I will also present item number 26. Item 1B26 is a resolution to approve the continuation of leave and benefits for members of the National Guard, Reserve Forces, or Reserve Components of Armed Forces who are recalled from the reserves to active service in response to the war on terror. I submit Item 1B26 for approval.
May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you. Items, appointments of distinguished professors effective February 1st. Mr. Jack Riley?
No, isn't it...
Someone's going to do it. Someone's going to do it.
We have five distinguished professors...
Did you put on your microphone?
Presenting...
Someone must put the mic...
Thank you. We have five distinguished professor nominations to present to the trustees. I would only say by way of introduction that this is a remarkable, remarkable group of faculty. The first is Peter Carey from Hunter College, who is possibly considered Australia's greatest living novelist. He's published 11 volumes of fiction, a children's novel, a piece of travel writing, dozens of short stories, essays, articles, two screenplays. He's done over 100 interviews, and he has performed on five video cassettes. His work is translated into at least 30 languages. He's won numerous prizes and really is one of the most distinguished professors in any of the fine arts programs at City University. So I would, you know, I would present him to you as someone who's won the prestigious Booker Award, not once, but twice. Just a remarkable, remarkable feat. He's also won a host of other prizes as well. Dr. Gail Levin, who is in the Art History Program at Baruch College, is an internationally known scholar, biographer, and art historian. She is primarily concerned with the visual arts, but she has an interdisciplinary approach to the study of modern art. Her reputation is based upon 18 books that she's written or edited, including definitive studies of Edward Hopper. She's currently working on the artwork of Judy Chicago and has an interest in both feminist art and in Eastern European Jewish immigrant influences on American modern art. Her work has been cited in a variety of publications. She has curated productions in some of the most fine institutions in New York City, including the Whitney Museum of Modern Art. She's given talks all over the world, and she's won a number of awards, including a Fulbright, a National Association of Women Artists Award for Biography, and National Endowment for the Humanities Grant, another extraordinary candidate. James Oats, who is a professor of history at the Graduate School and University Center, has done path-breaking scholarship on 19th century America. He too has an international reputation. He's tackled some of the largest and most important questions about the history of the United States from the Revolution through the Civil War. His early work focused on slavery, and his later work on anti-slavery thinking and the political processes that ultimately led to emancipation. He's written a number of books, and last year was the recipient of the New York Public Library ACLS Research Fellowship. He's been a fellow for a number of years also at the Advanced, the Center for Advanced Study in Behavioral Sciences at Stanford University, a remarkable scholar. The fourth candidate is Michael Sortkin, who is an architect from City College, again someone who has a great deal of international experience. He's taught in a number of places all across the world. His work has been cited in Architectural Record. He's been writing for the Village Voice. He's one of the most influential scholars of urban design of the past two decades. He has respect from architects and thinkers throughout the world, and again is the author of path-breaking work that has really changed the field. He's an urban designer. He's worked in China, in the Netherlands, in Australia, and is sought after throughout the world for his architectural genius. The last candidate, Fred Gardafi, is being presented by Queens College. He is someone being recruited to Queens College from the University of Illinois at Chicago. Dr. Gardafi's groundbreaking work has single-handedly refined what academic scholars and the popular culture recognize today as Italian Americana. So he has really changed the scholarship in the field of Italian-American studies. He's introduced new ways of thinking, new theoretical methods, and he's examined some of the cultural myths of Italian America. The result of this is that his work is of interest to philosophers, historians, anthropologists, and a host of other social scientists. His work is very diverse. He is a prolific scholar. He's written six nonfiction books. He's edited a dozen more. He's written scores of articles, essays, and book chapters, and has written seven works of fiction. He has helped develop a bibliography of Italian-American writing that is considered the essential reference work in the field. He's won awards, and he's been recognized by people in this country and abroad for the extraordinary breadth of his research. So I present these candidates to this committee.
May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll have the resolution regarding disposition of the authority to the Vice Chancellor for Human Resource Management and the Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations.
Thank you. I will present this item. As you know, the Board has established two new Vice Chancellor positions, one for Labor Relations and one for Human Resources Management. These Vice Chancellor positions replace the single Vice Chancellor for the Faculty and Staff Relations that existed previously. Item 1B31 is a resolution giving the Chancellor the authority to assign duties originally assigned to the Vice Chancellor for Faculty and Staff Relations to the two new Vice Chancellors. I submit Item 1B31 for approval.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
You got a question?
I was saying you crossed. I didn't realize you crossed.
Oh, okay. Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you.
Bill Kelly?
Mr. Kelly?
President Kelly.
Resolution regarding the appointment of Dr. Julia Wrigley to the position of Acting Provost and Senior Vice President of the Graduate School and University Center.
Good evening again. It's with pride and pleasure that I bring this potential appointment to the Committee for Approval. Dr. Julia Wrigley is a distinguished sociologist. She has a bachelor's from Michigan, a master's degree, and a doctorate from Wisconsin. Her research has been supported by grants from NSF, from the National Institute of Mental Health, from the Spencer and Sloan Foundations, from the American Sociological Association, and from Russell Sage. She's the author of three well-received books, most notably Other People's Children: An Intimate Account of Middle-Class Parents and the Women They Raised to Hire Their Children. She was the author, two years ago, of an important study about childcare in the United States that received a good deal of attention in the New York Times. She has published many, many articles. At the Graduate Center, she has been served as the Executive Officer of the Sociology Program, and most recently as Associate Provost and Dean for Academic Affairs. In that role, she has distinguished herself not only as a leading scholar but a first-class administrator. We feel very, very fortunate and proud that Julia Wrigley is willing to assume this position at the Graduate Center. I recommend her to you with confidence and enthusiasm.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Is Dr. Wrigley here with you today?
She is. I might like to say a word.
Please come to the table. Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to work with you and for you at the Graduate Center, and I greatly appreciate CUNY as an institution and its enormous contributions to the city of New York, and my colleagues in sociology and elsewhere have made it part of their life's work to explore those contributions, and we experience them every day at the Graduate Center as we see how our doctoral students have benefited from the kinds of contributions that all of you have made also, to their financing, their support, to their achievements. So thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
(applause).
Madam Chairman, I'd like to just make a comment. As a member of the graduate faculty, I look forward with my, together with my colleagues, I look forward to working with Dr. Wrigley, and we're very pleased to be on this panel.
President Morales. Appointment of Robert Huber to the position of Acting Vice President for Institutional Advancement at the College of Staten Island.
Thank you. I am pleased to ask your approval to appoint Mr. Robert Huber as Acting Vice President for Institutional Advancement at the College of Staten Island, follows an interim appointment as Acting Dean for Institutional Advancement, following the resignation of the Vice President for College Advancement. Mr. Huber has served as the Acting Dean for Institutional Advancement since November 7th of 2007, and prior to that, as Director of Marketing and Communications at the college. Prior to that appointment, he came to the college after, as an award-winning journalist, before serving as Member of the Cabinet of Mayor Rudolph Giuliani, as well as Senior Public Affairs Director with three Fortune 50 corporations. He is a graduate of Syracuse University College of Law, and I recommend his appointment with enthusiasm.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Is Mr. Huber here with you today?
Yes.
Welcome. Come to the table if you would like.
Thank you very much for this opportunity, especially the faith that Dr. Morales has put in me. I look forward to telling the story of CUNY on Staten Island. It's a story that sometimes hasn't been said as loud and as strong as it needs to be, and that's what we're about to do. I would also like to thank my friend Jay Hirschen for his support and faith in me as well. Thank you.
Thank you.[1264.32][1264.32](applause). Mr. Jack Riley?
Yes. The first one, Isaac Barge, is, am I supposed to present that, or will President Hotler present that?
You can present it.
Okay. All right. He's being recommended as Assistant Professor at New York City College of Technology and Biological Sciences, and a waiver is required. It's a sort of unusual situation. He was appointed in September 1, 2003, as an Assistant Professor in the Department of Physical and Biological Sciences. A recent review of his credentials revealed that the university in Brussels, Belgium, from which he earned a doctorate, is not recognized as an accredited institution. So in order for him to continue as Assistant Professor, a waiver by law 117b2 is required. In the area of research, he's been active in co-authoring a series of articles and abstracts and delivering presentations at several conferences around the country and in Canada. He's been a co-author on a biology laboratory manual and on book chapter. In addition, he's been active in his profession as a Chair of the Bioinformatics and Biology Track at international conferences. At New York City Tech itself, he's made a significant contribution as Evening, Weekend, and Summer Coordinator since 2004.
Thank you. Are there any confessions or comments? If there being none, let's move to Resolution 4. We don't vote on that? I think we generally vote on all of them at one time.
Oh, oh, okay.
I just wanted to see if there were any questions or comments, and as we went along. Resolution number four? We can vote on it individually then. Resolution number three, may I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Yes, abstentions.
No abstentions. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Resolution number four?
The next one is the appointment of Lani Isabel. You had to find a whole series of appointments of waivers with, for the journalists. The CUNY Graduate School of Journalism started last year, and they did not realize that they had to ask for waivers if people didn't fully meet all the credentials. So this is one of the first ones, Lani Isabel. When I prepared the blurb on him, I thought Lani was a female name, and I put she all the way through. So just erase that, it's a he. So Lani Isabel. From 1989, 2005, he worked at Newsday, eventually serving as Deputy Managing Editor. The group he supervised won the 2005 Pulitzer Prize for Foreign Reporting. Before that, he worked at Boston Herald, Boston Globe, Oakland Tribune. He had a Pointer Ethics Fellowship in 2006, and he received the Newsday Supervising Editor of the Year Award. Do you want me to stop at each one, or just go on with the...
Go on, but why?
Yeah. The next one is Sandeep Junakar, also in CUNY Graduate School of Journalism, MS from Columbia University Graduate School of Journalism. His specialty is the impact of technology and the Internet on journalism. He was the New York Bureau Chief of CNET Networks News.com. Prior to that, he was the news producer, breaking news editor for the New York Times on the web, and from 2003 to 2006, he was a Louis B. Wilde Visiting Professor at the School of Journalism in Indiana University Bloomington. Stephen Strasser has an MS from Columbia University in Journalism. From '77 to 2004, he worked at Newsweek. He recently was the Managing Editor of Newsweek International, and he supervised day-to-day operations of the editions that circulate in Europe, Asia, and Latin America. He's now a book editor and writer.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of Items 4, 5, and 6?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the motions carry. Thank you very much. Mr. Riley?
Okay. Under information items, Alexandra Woods-Logue is being appointed at Queens College with immediate tenure. She previously held tenure at SUNY Stony Brook, and she's an experienced and longtime professor. Item B has been removed. City College has not yet appointed Mitchell Schaffler, so the name is being taken out of there. C, D, and E, we have three reappointments with early tenure. The first one is Barbara Montero from Staten Island. She maintains an active publication record, forthcoming book with Wadsworth Press. She co-edited a book with Rutledge Press, 16 peer-reviewed articles, four chapters in books, received the Felix Gross Endowment Award for Outstanding Scholarly Achievement and other research fellowships. D, Jane Fitzpatrick, when she came to the Graduate Center in 2004, she had over 13 years of academic library experience. She was a tenured professor, Associate Professor at SUNY Maritime College. At the time she, before she became Assistant Professor, she had an MA in Library Sciences from Simont College but did not have a second MA, which is required. She now has the MA in Liberal Studies from the Graduate Center. She publishes in peer-reviewed journals and a regular contributor to the Scribd Encyclopedia of American Lives. She's a former President and Vice President of the New York Technical Services of the SUNY Libraries Association. Miki Makihara has been teaching at Queens since September of 1999. She broke her tenure cycle at one point to advance her research, thus she's actually taught at Queens for eight and a half years. She co-edited a book for Oxford University Press, which is in hardcover and paperback editions, numerous journal articles, book chapters, and conference proceedings chapters. James Carragher has been at City for the past two years as Diplomat in Residence in the Division of Social Sciences. He teaches a course on Model United Nations. He's been active in the U.S. Foreign Service for over 30 years. He's been deployed to missions in South America and Africa, so a great deal of hands-on experience. The last four are all adjunct, either Assistant or Associate Professors in Journalism. Jerry Hester handles the news service. He's the News Service Director of the CUNY Graduate School of Journalism. It's an Internet-based wire service that feeds work by students to media outlets around the city. Prior to that, he spent several years at New York Daily News, and at the end, he was the City Editor. Trudy Lieberman is an award-winning investigative journalist with 37 years' experience. She worked for Consumer Reports since 1977. Her last assignment was Director of the Center for Consumer Health Choices. Dodie Siantar is connected with many news outlets over the years, Newsweek, The Washington Post, InStyle. Finally, he was the senior reporter and Business Department Head for Time Magazine. And finally, Dulyn Nugent, who was most recently co-founder and creative director of a film and video production company, and he's a consultant for websites and newspapers.
Thank you very much. Item K, President Kelly. Resolution regarding the Graduate School and University Center revisions to the university, maybe...
The governance plan.
This item was actually approved at the full board...
Yes.
...on November 26th, but at that meeting, we discussed that because it did not have the opportunity to come to the committee that we would just have an opportunity to present it here.
Yes, as you will. Again, another good evening. As you all know, the Graduate School is both Graduate School and University Center, and one of the functions of the University Center is to house a variety of university-wide programs, among them the School of Journalism. And the resolution before you has to do with changes in the governance plan, mostly minor, to accommodate the School of Journalism under our bylaws. These have been approved both at the School of Journalism and at the Graduate Center and Graduate Council, and we recommend them to you with no qualification.
And this is for point of information only. I understand that trustee Philip has submitted a memorandum to the Board, which we have taken into consideration.
I haven't seen it.
Which we gave to him, and we, in fact, encourage you, when you present your, have your items from the School of Journalism, and we welcome them to come before the committee. of Journalism, and we welcome them to come before the committee at that time, when you so have that opportunity.
Would you be pleased to have me read this item? Will it go into the record?
It will go into the record, as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to the report of the Vice Chancellor.
Okay, I have two reports for the committee tonight that I've distributed, one on sexual harassment. I've distributed a summary of the sexual harassment complaints. I want you to note that there were a total of 86 sexual harassment complaints, down from 107 in 2000, 2001, which was the last time this information was reported to the Board. I have also distributed a summary of discrimination complaints, which shows that 96 complaints were registered primarily in three areas, disability, race, and gender. If there are questions on this report, we can certainly, I can take them now, or we can discuss them at a later date. Search waivers, there are two search waivers, one at Lehman and one at CCNY. Both were granted to allow movement of individuals from research foundation to tax levy lines. Do we have paperwork on that? On search waivers? No, we usually just give it as an oral report. Because I have to present this in, can I get it in writing? The ECP appointments below the level of Vice President have also been distributed to you. Seven of these are new appointments, the rest are replacements. And there are nine HEO appointments with bylaw waivers. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I get in writing the information on the search waivers. We have never gotten those in writing before? It's gone back and forth. Sometimes you- It would be helpful to have them in writing.
Did you indicate the colleges and with the search waivers, CCNY and Lehman? Did you get that?
CCNY.
I'll give it to you.
And what were the positions?
I'll tell you in a second. There was a HEO Associate at the Sophie Davies School of Biomedical Education, and as I said, both of these search waivers were granted for transfer from research foundation to tax levy payrolls. And at Lehman College, it was a HEO Assistant, Performing Arts Center Theater Operations Manager.
Thank you. Just a few comments that I've asked the Vice Chancellor then in the future. I know we had a meeting and passed a resolution about naming, and so in the future, I've asked that for future resolutions with regard to naming, that we just be told if they're consistent with the naming policy, and if they're not consistent, as to why they may or may not be consistent. And so going forward, we will have that information provided to us. And we also spent considerable time last year discussing faculty recruitment and diversity. And so I've asked the Vice Chancellor to report back to us with regard to the status of the wonderful new faculty that we've been brought on, and some of our issues with regard to diversity and our success in that. And so she will also give us those reports going forward in a future meeting. Are there any other issues that you would like the Vice Chancellor to address at future meetings, other than things that I may have come up with? If there aren't any, I believe we have reached the end of our meeting. Are there any other questions, comments?
Great, 32 minutes.
There being none, I may have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.